Folks, if you'll have your seat, please, we're going to bring the meeting to order, please. Thank you very much. We're getting ready to start here right now. But are you ready?
Yeah.
I'm showing six o'clock, and we, the session is now in order. If you'll please rise, Oliver Key Garden is going to do, lead us into invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, folks, at this time, it's an opportunity for members of the public to suggest the addition of topics for discussion, or to address topics of interest that are already on the presentation. Please limit your discussions to three minutes. All speakers will conduct themselves in a mannerly fashion, and please, when you do, address yourself, the council with your name and address, please. First one on here is Andrea.
Hello, Andrea Henkens, 35, Ten Yard. First of all, I really like it so far, how you've gone about searching for the city manager, getting the public involved. I really think it's wonderful. I would like to make a recommendation, after listening to Ken talk about what they do. Please, every one of you, read the resume, or whatever resume you get, and be especially aware of the language that is used in the resume. Now, whatever. I would also make another recommendation, since you've heard what is checked and what is not checked by the service provider. Check the references, and check the volunteer activities, whatever's listed on the resume. Somebody, please, look it up, did that person actually do it, rather than just being a member of a board somewhere. And another thing that I really would like you to do, once you have a bunch of candidates that you consider, bring them out to the citizens, make it public who they are, because I'm pretty sure there are many citizens who would be very interested in know who applied, and some citizens, maybe too many, will give you some information about these people that applied. It might be helpful. Another thing, and I'm not quite sure if I'm saying the right thing.
Can I make a comment, since that is on the agenda? There is a confidentiality issue that we have, because some people that apply for city manager jobs, it's not public that they're applying.
I know that.
We have to really do it, we're not keeping anything away from anybody. We have to do things in executive sessions, and I mean, we have to sign pieces of paper that we're not even going to read, you know, these names, because livelihoods are affected.
I know, I know. But once you introduce the three final candidates, don't introduce them, and two days later, decide who you want to hire. Give it a week, or something.
(inaudible).
Oh, don't it. Okay.
Because if they don't make it, they don't want their city to know that they applied and failed.
I know.
So, please, respect, you know, that.
I know, I know, but, I mean, you know.
I know what you want.
How they sometimes meet the candidates, if you have that. Next thing, and I'm not sure if I'm saying the right thing, I just spoke to Mr. Potts. I don't know what powers you can give the city manager. Please, if it's at all possible, don't give the city manager, the potential city manager, even if he's a saint, don't give him powers that he can abuse. If you have a way to restrict somehow, the higher and firepowers of important department heads, try to limit it, have some sort of a review, you as a city council, you know, use administrative leaves before firing, whatever. Third thing, well done. No, I forgot it. Okay, do I still have a minute? Oh, yeah, let me think. I don't remember it, I might have to sign up again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. We have a candidate for our, only attorney, district attorney in the audience, Stephanie, would you like to introduce yourself and make a few comments, please?
I would. Good evening, my name is Stephanie Newell. I'm a candidate for district attorney. I wanted to first introduce myself, and tell you that I am the current first assistant here in Bell County, and I have been working tirelessly as a public servant since August of 2005. So that's 18 years dedicated to Bell County, doing the work prosecuting exclusively felonies in this county. I have 22 years of prosecution experience. So, I went straight to a DA's office, right out of law school. This is my passion, this is my calling. As first assistant, I have run the administration of the office. I have a vast amount of trial experience. There are people in this room who are familiar with my work.
Oh, really?
Oh, I hope not. Absolutely. I'm going to ask Mr. Hartman to please stand. We have three minutes of questions for Mr. Hartman. No, he was on my grandeur. So, he is familiar with, basically, the leadership abilities, the integrity, and the experience that I bring to this position. So I will stay and stick around, and if anybody would like to speak to me after this meeting, I will be here. I also have a website, my campaign materials, if you have any questions. I think most notably was last year's Capitol murder prosecution of Cedric Marks, and I'm the one who stood between those victims' families and Cedric Marks, and got that conviction. And so I appreciate the opportunity to speak to the public, as well as a city council, and thank you for giving me that opportunity.
Thank you very much, Stephanie. Appreciate it. Moving right along, we're going to go to the consent agenda. Basically, that has to do with the minutes from the last meetings. Do I hear a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Second.
Second.
In a second. Is there any, any discussion on, any alternation, alternates, or alterations, or anything? No? Everything okay? Do I hear a motion to accept? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes on the consent agenda. Going into the committee reports, instead of going to each one, does anybody have anything on any of the committee reports they'd like to, like to ask about? EDC, library?
Pam. Library.
That was the next one on the line. There you go.
Pam Robinson, Mary Ruth Briggs Library Chairperson. I think most of you by now are, know who elder explorers at the point are. The library sponsors them, and we meet once a month, here in the Event Center. In January, we, Carrie's laughing at me, in January, we had a tremendous program with Roxanne Stryker, as the leader of a program on diabetes. And in fact, I had someone say, I could have sat and listened to her for two more hours, she was so good, and I have asked her to come back and finish it up. And at the time, we had to move to the library, which was a little smaller, but cozy, and the meeting that we're having, were having this month, on February the 29th, has had to be canceled. We did not know that there was early voting in here, and so, we could not find another place to go to. We really can't have it in the library, because it is, we don't have, let dogs come into the library, and this is on pet therapy, and there would be a couple of dogs there.
Is there an opportunity, does it have to be in here, or can I possibly look at the Cog offices for you to have the meeting?
I think we've reconciled the situation, and we've just decided to cancel it, and we will have it in April. And, let's see, it will be on therapy dogs, and I think everybody was kind of excited about that, so hopefully. March 28th, we will be in here, and Barbara Wilson, Wilson School of Art, will be leading our program, and her program is You Can Draw. That means we're going to have interactive learning, how to draw.
That'll be good.
And we're having a hot chocolate bar.
That'll be good.
And I wanted to let you know about a new nonprofit 501(c)(3) group that has been formed, Friends of the Mary Ruth Briggs Library, and the mission statement is to keep the world of knowledge and entertainment open to everyone in NPR. And we would do that by increasing awareness of library services, develop online library book distribution, fund or build a larger library, and develop other educational sources and services. So there's more coming soon. We at least have the account set up, everything is done. We even have a treasurer, and president, and vice president, and we still need to meet, so look out for us, we'll be wanting to talk to you. And one more thing that I'd like to talk about that happened, I believe it was last month, I don't know if anybody really knew about this, I happened to see online, Helping Hands Ministry of Belton put a picture up of their bare bookcases. And so, my helper bee, my husband, Robbie, and I went up to the library, and we pulled 200 donated books, and took them out there, and they were thrilled. We filled up all those bookcases, and it was a win-win situation for both of us, because we have a lot of books that are donated. Now, we can use the paperback, after we've gone through them, and we figure out if we have them, or if we want to keep them, we still have a lot of books left. And those, those hardback books don't go in well into our tab boxes, our little libraries. So we're always looking for someplace to, to give them, and this was just a perfect thing, and we hope to do it again. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you, Pam.
Anybody else? Stephen, you have anything, we're in Parks and.
State that we did have the first Parks and Recs meeting about two weeks ago, and we're well underway, so.
All right, looking for good things to happen.
Good stuff.
Going into the department reports, I think Jesse, do you have something on the maintenance side of it?
It's good to be surrounded by great people. Start, first thing out, the new year in January, we were investigated by the TCEQ, Patrice, all the guys, once again, it came out with a perfect score. It's not something should be taken for granted, it's not real common.
Jesse, is your speaker, is your microphone on? Be sure to leave the lights on.
Is it?
There you go.
All right.
There you go.
And we shouldn't take it for granted, especially considering how many times they've repeated this over a long period of years, not only in our water system, but also our wastewater system. Jerry Worden, he's been with our department for a little over a year. Normally, it takes the training classes, plus two years' experience to upgrade a license. With his college degree, the TCEQ declared him eligible with only one year.
Where did he go to school?
Pardon?
Where did he go to school?
Uh, forgot. Yeah, y'all are at.
He and I, I just wanted.
That's funny, okay.
Yeah, he's, Carrie's proud of his Aggies.
Yeah.
Sam, our newest employee, he really worked hard, and within his first two months of employment, he achieved his first water license, and should be ready to go with wastewater here shortly. Chief Shutsi extended an opportunity to one of our guys, Jordan Richards, to attend the police academy. That man worked hard, for a full year, four-night classes and weekends, he worked hard, and he achieved it. He's now Officer Richards, Reserve, in Chief's Department. We're really proud to see what, see what the man accomplished, what he accomplished. And we want, we want to congratulate Chief Shutsi, he's stepping up in the world, he's got a little dream team on his team now.
Woo-hoo!
Appreciate that, sir, thank you.
Sharing the dream.
Anybody else, in the departments?
This is just in case you're paying attention on the council packets, there is a couple of things that happened with EMS this past month, and we usually talk about fire. One, there's a citizen that had some concerns about how the way we staffed and funded EMS, and what the certification costs, which is about 24 cents a day, we did the math, it's in your council packet. But I think we've done a really good job of marketing our EMS program to you guys, and to the public, and actually, not just marketing, but executing it, but I think one of the side effects has been, we have a perception of being a very large, well-funded, huge, well-paid-for, consuming your tax dollars EMS program, and that is not the case. All of our volunteers, their certifications are paid for, for free, it's just something that state does, and most of the training is covered through grants and all that stuff. But you guys know we have a good program, but that's why there's a little bit more information. Ironically, I guess, though, we also had to change the way EMS was delivered. And a real quick primer on this, AMR is the largest provider in the world of EMS for ambulance service. We've had AMR here since October 1st of 2017. They've done great. This isn't a, an aside, or a bash, or anything to AMR. We've always gotten an ambulance out of Station 8, that's the fire station on Airport. Some people think we've been ambulance here, thanks to the dive team, it's not ambulance, it's just a dive truck. But our closest ambulance had been up there at Station 8, and they've done a change in the way they do business. Our ambulance we get now is out of Station 2 from Belton, it's about twice as far, both in distance and time. So that does have the potential for an adverse impact, I'm not here to tell you that the sky is falling or anything tonight, but I'm telling you that we are watching it, and that's part of the reason that we do have a good EMS program, they kind of go hand-in-hand, but that is something we're tracking, and I'll get back to you guys on council next month, we have some more data on that. Any questions on the EMS stuff, or? I know it was a bigger read, but that's, that's why it's there, so.
Wow, I thought it was very fast.
Appreciate everything.
No idea.
We do, you're doing a good drive. We're proud of you.
Thanks. Thank you, Barry, have a good night. I'm not here.
Anybody else? Okay, going into the regular agenda, and I'd like to, first on the agenda, is I'd like to hear a motion to accept Resolution 2024.03, which is to appoint Les Minor to Planning and Zoning. Les was here earlier, but I think he skipped that on his phone call, so, do I hear a motion to accept that?
Motion to accept Resolution 2024.03, to appoint Les Minor to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
You're second?
I'll second.
In a second, Dorothy, say.
I just need to say one thing, and I hate to jump in in the middle, but we need to make sure that we account for the correction to the resolution.
Yes, please.
Term retiring.
There's just a typo in the resolution, which needs to be corrected.
With that correction of removing retiring?
Just correcting the spelling.
Well, I'll second that resolution as amended.
Okay. Any discussion on that?
I just read his application, and I thought, we are very fortunate to get Mr. Minor here. He had some good things to say, I think he'll, he'll do a great job.
Been here a long time.
Yeah, it's just great.
Been here a long time.
Yeah, he's got some good information, and we're very pleased that you're on the commission, so.
Okay, all in favor of Mr. Minor, Planning and Zoning?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, and then instantiate, welcome aboard again. Okay, next on the agenda is approval of Resolution 2024.04, to appoint Ted Vanderleer to the EDC for a two-year term. Do I hear a motion to accept that, please?
I motioned to accept Resolution 2024.04.
Second?
Second.
Okay, Roxanne, second?
I think it's Ted Van Leer.
Okay, any discussion? Is he in attendance? Oh, there he is, right there, I'm sorry, I looked back, way back there, I'm sorry, I thought you'd walked out a little while ago. You gonna stand up, so everybody sees you? There you are.
You want to say?
Thank you very much.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Well, we got to approve him, are we all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You made it, everybody passes.
I just wanted to make the same comment here, reading his application, I thought this is, we have really got some qualified people coming to volunteer for our city. Very happy that you're on the, this new board.
Okay, next item to discuss and consider to Bell County, short-term. Before we go into that, there are some items on the agenda here, that we may kind of feel like, you may feel like we're just kind of brushing over pretty quickly, but we had a workshop prior to this, and a lot of this was discussed at length. So if you feel like some of this stuff is not thoroughly discussed, please think again, because it's been.
Call us, and we'll fill you in.
Yeah, there you go. A lot of this has been discussed thoroughly, and you're welcome to talk to any of the council people afterwards, if you have a question. So, going into the next one is the discuss and consider inter-local agreement with short-term rental with Bell County.
I move to discuss the inter-local agreement with Bell County on short-term rentals.
This has to do with, you want to explain this on the funds, on the, on the short-term rental?
Yeah, so this is one of those items that we went over in the workshops, just so everybody knows. This is something that everybody may have seen in the paper last month, that we were going to enter an inter-local with Bell County, and we didn't know anything about it. So here it is, in front of us, we have the inter-local agreement, and this is basically for the city to collect their fair share of the hotel occupancy tax for short-term rentals. At this time, there is no cost for us to participate in this. If, if in the future, a cost does become required to participate, we will then have to analyze and see if it's, it's worth the cost that's associated.
Unfortunately, it is not a landslide, or a bunch of monies, though, we're not talking about a lot of money here, but do I hear a motion to accept inter-local agreement?
I move to accept the inter-local agreement with Bell County.
In a second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Now the same thing, we're going to have discuss and consider inter-local agreement with the Temple for Water. And I'm going to let Ryan, you're Ryan, talk about this one right here, we already discussed it, but you want to fill the audience in?
There's, there's no action necessary. So, you know, I kind of discussed this, this stems from the TCEQ report that Jesse provided in his packet, and the production water capacity, TCEQ is, is dinging us on that, so I am actively working on Temple to possibly amend, if, if we're able, our contract for water supply with Temple. If the answer to that is a straight-faced no, then we'll just have to explore some other options, and there are some other options that we can talk about in the future, as those come to light, but this is a 30-year contract we're in with the city of Temple, and that's all there really is to it. At this time, it's really more of an informational update.
Nothing we can do on that, so we just pass on that, we're going to go into the.
Except for make, keep it top of mind, so everybody knows water is an issue, not only in Texas, and California, but across the globe, really. So this will be something that we will need to address at some point, and we, hopefully, there's some guidance in the comprehensive plan when we get it, and then we will start putting options to it, to see.
Everybody will have to start bringing a bottle of water at a meetings, okay? We'll put a bucket out here, so we'll have community water.
From the lake.
I'd rather have a bottle of water right now. Okay, we're going to discuss and consider your fiscal year 23, 24 strategic plan, which we have, Ryan, I'm going to let you take it from there.
I can, I can chime in, but any council members can, of course, always jump in if they want. We did discuss this during the workshop as well, and since we do not have that draft plan with us right now, we are going to schedule a special session, tentatively for the 19th, at 6:00 PM in the library. That information will be forthcoming, as, as we have information for it. I don't know, just so everybody's aware, and, and people look for the packet, that we will actually have the strategic plan out at the same time as the agenda. It may come a day or two after. If anything happens, and we don't receive that plan, we may have to reschedule that. We're, we're really at the, you know, the mercy of the consultant on, on this, for lack of a better term, so we're trying to move forward with this as, as quickly as we can, because it is tied to the city manager recruitment process.
Okay. Next on the agenda is discuss and consider, this is a retro here, ratification of action taken during a regular city council meeting, June 13th, 2023, so this is last year, for council member Dorothy Allen to work with the finance director, to provide a shorter and concise financial report for our council packet. Evidently, we missed the ratification of that last year, so we're going back as a correction.
So, so this actually, this happened during the member comments of the, of that meeting, so we just brought it back to ratify it as an actual action, action item, but the entire council voted for council member Allen to work with Carrie, and it's specifically geared toward providing the council financial records that they find easy to read, that aren't the 70, 80-page packet. We do have a plan, and we intend on posting financials online, we haven't gotten there yet, but this is specific to have council member Allen work with Carrie, to get counsel what they need to make good financial decisions for the city, and how best to share that information. So, go ahead.
It's going to be an iterative process. So, I mean, I'm, I'm just representing, like we're doing on the city manager, I'm just representing, and then we'll come to council, and you guys can say this makes sense, or it doesn't make sense.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to ratify the action taken on June 13th, 2023, designating council member Allen as our financial whiz.
I'll, I'll second.
Do I hear a motion to accept that ratification?
Yeah, that was my.
Oh, do, do, do I get a second?
I seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I figured there's a ready discussion on it, so I didn't all.
I wanted to just make a discussion that I, I'm really very thankful, again, that we have Dorothy Allen here, and I recognize that Dorothy is from the private sector, but I also know that Carrie Erskine is from the private sector, and has come here, so I think he should be able to, you know, help her with any transitions and things, but I'm very glad that we have a financial whiz on our team.
I'd like to just add, that I think, over the last six to eight months, we've seen some culling down, making the documents a lot easier, so good job, Carrie. Keep it up.
Okay, next on there is discuss and consider police department staffing. Matt, do you want to make a quick comment on any of that, or are you going to do it, Ryan? Who's going to do it?
While, while he's coming up, I can. While he's coming up, I can kind of speak to it. Of course, this was brought to you, to everybody, last month. Matt provided some, some statistics, he has some additional information he can share with you for police officer justification. What I have on the, the form that I provided was really preliminary to any, you know, I create these forms, and things change, so nothing in here is set in stone. The budget amendment and all of that was, is part of this. Of course, the budget amendment is, I believe, the next item, so taking action on this will have a, have an impact on the requested budget amendment, but I'll let Matt speak to the request itself.
Hey, Matt.
Oh, thank you. So, in January, I provided you a brief presentation on the addition of a additional police officer. I also gave you a little presentation there, also, after that meeting, I sent y'all a detailed explanation of, with police department comparisons related to population, and then also sent y'all, in that, with that was also the fact that, you know, organizations set out to help you manage your police department, actually says that we are below, you know, state average, national average, and the average of similar-sized populous cities. With that in mind, I think it's Michael, Dorothy, correct me, Michael.
Mike.
Mike, yeah, we know him as Mike, with Clear Career. That's the company that's set out to hire our city manager for us. So I reached out, Michael has some experience in the, or Mike, has some experience in the law enforcement era, before he went to Clear Career. So I reached out to him, he said that he could provide some further justification for, for a police officer, additional police officer in the city. police officer in the city. So his response, um, and I'll read it, it's very, it's very brief, um, but it's broken down into three different, uh, criterias. So, uh, Mike's, Michael says, expanding the police force at Morgan's Point Resort is decision that warrants careful consideration with just falling into several key categories. The first is performance measures highlight the need for additional manpower. With an increased officer presence, department can better meet response time targets, ensuring swift assistance in emergencies researched by the International Association of Chief of Police suggests that adequate staffing levels positively correlate with response times, thereby enhancing public safety and satisfaction. Moreover, a larger force enables officers to allocate more time to proactive crime prevention strategies such as community policing initiatives and targeted patrols, which can contribute to a reduced crime in rates, uh, over time. So he addresses, goes on and says, secondly, addressing the specific context of Morgan's Point Resort, data on crime rates underscores the necessity for bolstered law enforcement resources. According to the FBI's UCR Uniform Crime Reporting Program, the area has experienced a high uptick in certain types of offenses in recent years, including property crimes and drug-related incidents. By adding a police officer position, a department can intensify its efforts to deter criminal activity and apprehend offenders, therefore fostering a safer environment for residents and businesses alike. He continues by saying, furthermore, enhancing traffic safety constitutes a critical rationale for augmenting the police force. As traffic congestion and accidents pose significant concerns for the community, deploying an additional police officer can facilitate more effective enforcement of traffic laws and regulations. Research published in a journal of safety research highlights the impact of visible police presence on reducing speeding and other risky behaviors leading to fewer accidents and injuries on roadways. By proactively addressing traffic safety issues, the department can mitigate potential harm and enhance overall quality of life residents. So his conclusion is, in conclusion, the decision to add additional police officer position for the Morgan's Point Resort Police Department is multifaceted with justifications spanning performance measures, crime rates and traffic safety concerns. By evaluating these factors comprehensively, stakeholders can make an informed decision to allocate resources effectively and promote the well-being of the city or the community. So, um, I mean, that's, that's pretty, pretty alongside of what we've been saying, um, the need for the police officer is and that further just justifies the fact that, uh, that we could use an additional police officer in our force. Um, Orion, do you have anything else or?
No, I, I mean, I, I, I think it's up to, you know, the council to, to make the determination, but we are open to any questions that you may have. Um, of, of course, like I said, there is, there's budgetary impact, but, um, we'll discuss that in the, in the next agenda item because we didn't get through the entire thing during the workshop.
Thank you, Matt. I would like to have a motion to discuss and consider police staffing. Do I hear a motion to accept that?
May I a, ask a question, please?
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to. When we had the budget meetings back in June, July, whenever it was, one of the things we talked about was having an admin person for-
Let me do, let, we need to accept it and then, and then we'll have a discussion and you can take that, okay?
And Matt, maybe you oughta come back up.
There we go. So please, do we accept, uh, motion to accept that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to open for discussion.
Okay, in a second.
I'll second.
There it is. Okay, now, please, you're on the record.
Sorry, I, and it's, I'm probably behind the power. We had talked about at the budget meeting, Carrie, help me out on this, that we were, they were asking for an administrative position to help both the fire and the police, if I remember. And we talked about, and I think I remember we were, we agreed that if we hired a police officer, someone who was certified in police, then they would be more useful in that they would be able to have access to the data that, uh, o, only cops can look at. Is that, and that, that person would be the admin, but also be the, the other guy to, to fill in when needed. Is that this position or am I back asleep again?
No, so, uh, basically, uh, that is not the position.
Did, what did we do with that other position?
Uh, it was voted down by the council.
Well, but I think the issue on the ta, the elephant in the room is, uh, police admin. So I don't know, Stephen, you started to say-
Well, I was just gonna say, I think what, what council had agreed on was, let's discuss having a police officer instead of an admin. So that was the, that was the conversation, I believe.
So admin will be covered by now having 10 police officers. There won't be backlogs and investigations will be done and documented and so at this point, making this investment in this position, I just wanna make sure we're not coming back, you know, six months from now saying, um, well, we need that admin position too. Um, I know it takes time to work through because we've got a couple new officers that have been here less than a year, made a couple internal promotions, which are awesome. Um, and there are no guarantees in life, but can you, is, is this it for a while as far as staffing for the police department?
I, I, I think, I think this is a different position than that admin.
Correct.
Um, and it is basically one apple, one orange. This, this person will not be doing that admin. What this person's gonna do is their own admin work that they're creating.
Right.
So, so that doesn't fill any type of void or any administrative work that the PD needs help with or the fire department needs help with. This doesn't fill that void. This fills a public safety void on having the additional officer. Um, because while our other officers are sitting inside doing the work associated with writing their tickets, traffic stops, arrests, they're not out on the street providing general assistance or, or patrolling to make sure that the community's safe.
I lost the bubble on that because I thought we had talked about being able, instead of using just a, a, not just, but a person that did not have a law enforcement certification.
Yeah, so, uh, so to go back to that, the reason we didn't do that is, um, if I can tw, point to anyone in this room, um, and just say, let's send one of them to the police academy. They don't wanna go to the police academy just to sit behind a desk. That's not what our job is to do. Um, our job is if we're gonna send somebody to the police academy, that's wasted resources. Um, and, uh, the city doesn't like to waste resources. Um, I, I would think that they'll all agree upon that, um, and the fellow citizens here. Uh, so we don't send somebody to the police academy just to send them to sit behind a desk. If we're sending them to the police academy where they have a law enforcement certification, they're gonna be in a patrol car, in a uniform, on the street, protecting and serving.
You know, one thing I looked at when I was going through your note the first time was the reference to the master plans. I went back to the, the 94 master plan, which is about 30 years ago, and we had at that point four reserve officers. And I know we've been down reserve officers, but now we have one. Is that an option to help with the administration? Would be to pursue some reserve officers?
Uh, so the reserve officer pool is not to augment for, again, uh, administrative functions. Um, I mean, it, that, that the whole point of the reserve program is for us to bolster the, the, yeah, is to bolster, um, our high crime rate or crime rate days and times, um, to keep the, to keep the crime down, um, on the streets. Um, now, all administrative work, everybody does their own version of their administrative work. Uh, but, uh, the investigation times and investig, number investigations are increasing. Um, so again, that's where we can show the need for crime rate is, is happening.
And there, and there are s, specific cases where there, there would be administrative casework or administrative work that is not assigned to a, a specific officer, open records requests, um, the, the, you know, records personnel, some, somebody helping with that as well as, you know, in, any of the evidence type stuff that, that the chief or, or whoever he's delegated have to handle right now as opposed to being out, so.
So in, in my presentation in January, to go along with that, uh, you know, I explained that, uh, with internal promotions and things like that. Um, while we promoted Sergeant Newsom in January, again, I remind you, back in January, I told you, uh, with that presentation that while he was being promoted, he's still not effectively where he should be as far as a supervisor or that ranking position. Um, by hiring this additional police officer, that will fill his spot on patrol, allowing him to help with administrative functions as well. But again, that also allows us to boost the, uh, police depart, police officers on the street because now Sergeant Newsom will go to a rotating shift, um, depending days, nights, weekends, whatever need be, to fill in gaps in coverage, um, and high crime days and times. Uh, so that, again, just augments that, but it also frees him up to help with administrative functions. So where he's, and then effectively put him where he should be to supervise the per, all of the personnel underneath him.
So just to simplify, Matt, because I think we had a great conversation yesterday and I appreciate your time. For, for the record, this position is gonna help the police department and it is gonna take some of the burden of the administration work off to, to some degree, not completely, but to some degree.
Correct.
So that in, when we start budget in June, we're not gonna be like, hey man, we need an admin position. We need, we need that like today. Cause we just, we're gonna commit to the, or maybe we commit to this. I, I don't know, you know, where everybody lands, but like, is that, is that, can you say that with a good conscience, honestly? Like, I mean, I know-
So, so with law enforcement, I'm gonna tell you, and Stephanie's sitting right over here next to me, she's gonna say, no, you can't commit to anything like that, uh, because we don't know what tomorrow brings. Uh, tomorrow I can have five cases sitting on her desk, uh, by the end of the night.
Absolutely.
Um, so, but yes.
Please keep in mind also that our police officers along in our fire department are first responders and there are lots and lots of emergencies that they respond to and you have heart problems at 3:00 in the morning.
Absolutely.
You remember, who, who, who you gonna call?
So, so yes, uh, it, it does help with some degree of the administrative function. Can I tell you that that will always be the case? And can I tell you that in October, that I won't be back here saying we need more help? No. But again, if that happens, that's not just for my department. That'll be a combined function between myself and the fire department that we'd be looking at. Um, and, uh, because we both see the need, um, and I think you all see the need, but that's a little different position than kind of what we might have been approaching this past October.
Absolutely.
Um, and, you know, a lot less of the funding side of things like that.
Yeah.
Uh, but again, that's for future discussions. But, um, but yes, it, it will help to, to some degree of that administrative function, not this actual position, but giving us this position will help me out move another officer or not move another officer.
And it's gonna lighten the burden on all of our officers to make it a little bit lighter, right?
Correct, correct.
If we have rocks in, has it come in, please? Yes, Laura?
Yeah, I, I wanted to be next, so. Um, I, great presentation, Matt. The, the packet was very good. Good justification, good documentation for it. Um, I came fully expecting a year, a month ago that I was gonna absolutely go forth, forth with this, but I have a big, big problem that's bothering me and that's our amended budget came out a lot higher than I was expecting. And so I'm having trouble saying yes to a position if I don't know if we have the money. And then we talked, and so that's coming up next. And then we talked about, well, let's just take the money that was designated for roads because we're not gonna be able to get them done this year. But I thought that money should stay in there for roads for next year. We could add on to it. And so that's where my big, you know, I have to, I'm, I keep trying to say, what's the best thing for the citizens and residents of Morgan's Point? And those are my questions and I don't think you can answer those, but I think that a budget amendment is gonna, we're gonna have to answer some of those.
So, so we are scheduled to, and we were partially through that, but what I, what I will say, and Carrie can jump in whenever, uh, he, he feels I'm leading you astray, uh, is yes, we did recommend to make the budget amendment neutral, to take, what was it, $75,000 from?
$75.
$75 from the FARF, um, because we're not forecasting that we're gonna use it. And then 175, correct, from the critical infrastructure, which you guys have designated as roads. The reasoning for that is because, sitting in my chair, I just signed the road study contract right before I came down here today.
Good.
And so that's a, that's also another agenda item, but since we're speaking to budget amendments that may affect this.
Yeah.
Um, I do not foresee that the timing of the road study, because that will be six to seven months to get that final document to the door, that an actual road project could be funded prior to the next budget cycle. And I understand you saying we can take the, the 250, roll it forward.
Add it on to next year's budget.
We discussed, we discussed that internally. It typically doesn't happen. Um, but, but it's something that, that we're looking to do moving forward. Now, we typically, typically at the end of the year see an influx of dollars that we would put back toward those as opposed to reassigning them somewhere else in the budget to make the, the budget balance out. Um, but at, at this point, of course, I can't forecast what September's gonna look like. Um, I can say this is what happened last year. There was $220,000 that was realized at the end of the year that had to be accounted for in the budget. Um, if we anticipate that, then yes, the 175 we take from the roads, we can put that back into the roads line item and mark it for next year to roll forward. If it's not experience, I, I mean, if we don't realize that, we don't.
And the opportunity is, instead of 250 for roads next year, we'll have to go in at 350. So, I mean, we will have to address roads.
And, and we-
It's just a timing issue in my mind. If realistically, you know, we're not gonna get there because-
And we're not taking the whole thing. Uh, we're only taking 175, which leaves-
Out of 250, which is several seconds.
Right. So there's still money in there, should, should there be an opportunity to do some smaller, high priority areas, uh, which, you know, I, I do transportation in my, my other side. I don't know that anything could come to fruition that fast.
And, and to help you ease your conscience, let me just put one more thing. Uh, in this room, you have some people that are sitting here that have drafted the master plan that we are currently working off of. We are not on that plan. And so if you, um, want to justification for that, um, we are not on that plan. This gets us onto that plan, which we also know we have another plan behind us lined up, which is gonna say something even more than that. So we're already behind the curve. And if we keep staying behind the curve, we'll never get to where we need to be. Um, and then on top of that, you know, again, Michael from Clear Career, you know, organization that this council has belief into hiring a city manager has said, we need additional law enforcement personnel. So I think that's justification.
And, and, and of course, that was just me providing the insight into the other items.
Right, right, yeah. So the timing that's in the budget amendment, so we can talk timing, I guess that's another variable, right? Um, so the timing that's in the budget amendment is April. Can you walk us through what you think the timing realistically might be?
Yeah, so, um, and then Carrie, it's kinda hard to put in the, in the black and white on the paper. Um, but again, we talked about it earlier in the workshop. Um, the, there's some things in there that, um, so that number is not like, we're not gonna write that check tomorrow. Um, keep that in mind. So that's a, say 120,000, I don't have the figure in front of me, 100, you know, $20,000. We're not gonna write that check tomorrow. Again, that's over the course of, you know, 11 to 12 months. Um, some of those figures, like the vehicle, for example, aren't gonna come for 11 and a half months. Um, and then we, like you said, we talked about that earlier, which does that, does that fall under this year's budget or next year's budget? But then some of those things that go along with that vehicle that are vehicle specific also won't come for that time. That's an all-in package, but there's no use in me buying a computer to let it sit in a closet, you know, if I don't have a car to put it in. Um, so some of those things. Um, and then the timeline on the, on, on the personnel is a little fluid. Um, for example, that's, that's, Carrie conservatively put it in at April 1st, but let's just say I do, uh, you know, Jesse mentioned it earlier, I do have a brand new police officer in my force that may wanna be full-time. Of course, that drops Jesse down, you know, a full-time employee on his department, but if that's something that, that, uh, Jordan would like to do, um, we always look to promote from within first, uh, which is how we've done it. Um, that's a potential that Jordan may be interested in that full-time job, which makes that timeline just a little bit shorter, you know? But again, not so much money because he's, he's already being paid his salary and we're changing, changing his salary slightly from what he's already been paid. So let's not-
Back to-
Yeah, so, so it's just, so, you know, the money, i, i, it's not, the money's not set in stone either, you know? That's the, the big thing too. But so the timeline-
We don't have a communication person for two months that we had budgeted for 12 months. You know, that'd be best case scenario. So there are little bits and pieces of this, but if you look at the budget amendment, um, the annual just rough numbers, it seems like if you look above the blue line, more likely it's gonna be about a $20,000 increase to next year's budget. So a lot of these chart, items that make up this budget are not recurring charges. Um, but so if we go above the blue line, it's about 20,000 that-
Then basically, if we have a $6.9 million budget right now, we would add 20,000 for that. And then obviously, the below the blue line with this officer and the vehicle, you know, the vehicle's a one-time charge. So for they're going forward, by the time you take a salary plus all the way loaded between benefits and stuff like that, you know, that's another 70,000. So going into next year's budget, if this is approved, I could see us going at the bare minimum from 6.9 up to seven point, you know, million, 7 million almost. So a lot of these, like I said, aren't recurring charges. So yes, it is sticker shock when you see that it's a $250,000 budget amendment, but if it's not a recurring charge, that does help ease. And again, no different than what we did this year, we presented a balanced budget with the best interest in mind. So we will have some probably increased property taxes, increased other things, and it's our goal after, if we go through the budget amendment, to really try to get some rates increased because we haven't adjusted rates in a long time for different enterprise funds or general fund services. So the money will, we will make it work next year, going into next year's budget if it if it gets approved.
So and to add to that, if you if you voted yes tonight and said yes, you know, if you wanted April 1st as it is, then I'm not looking to change that. If you tell me April 1st, regardless of whether we're hiring internal or what or external, if we're hiring external, it's probably going to be a little bit longer than that because it just happens to be about four to six months before we even actually say, yes, we have a qualified candidate. And then, you know, goes from there. So but if if we hire internal, if, you know, we were able to hire internal, if you said April 1st, okay, we have a hard deadline of April 1st. If you're external and you still told me April 1st, it's not likely that I would get it by April 1st, so that money will fluctuate as well, you know?
Do we want to go into the budget amendment if we don't have any more questions for Matt?
Well, the budget amendment
Got a vote on this?
Well, but isn't that combined?
But they're not combined, they are related.
Contingent. One is contingent on the other.
They were
I mean, we Neil, correct me if I'm wrong, we could table this until after we discuss the next item, correct? If somebody just wants a motion to table this
We didn't finish the
To follow the budget amendment.
Right.
If you want to do that, if you
I'd like to table this till
Thank you for being patient, Matt.
Amendment, budget amendment discussion.
A second on that?
I'll second.
All in favor? All right, it passes. Okay, now it's good. Now, just consider budget amendment 2024.01. Do I hear a motion to accept that?
I'd like to motion to open that for discussion there, Mr. Mayor, if I could, please.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, it's open for discussion.
Yeah, a couple of things just that we covered during the workshop and just playing with some numbers over here to make sure that the numbers are accurate on our in our packets. If we adjusted the item nine, the $10,000 for consulting down to $5,000, that's, I think, what we agreed on. That takes our total negative that adjusted is 127, 254, and 81 cents. Don't forget the 81 cents. And the only reason I bring that up is because then that makes some of the numbers on our lead sheet inaccurate. So also doing the math, when you change that to, you add the numbers together, our sheet says that the impact on the budget is a negative 259, 997. That's not correct. It's 247, 997. So as we move forward with that, just so that the numbers are correct in our sheets.
That will be attached to the resolution. So yeah, it needs
Well, and honestly, the Marina, 40,000 either, the Marina would be a little thousand.
Yeah, but for these purposes, these are the amounts we're putting in there. Like I said, in September, we will, there will be another red line
Reconcile.
A very thorough and complex budget amendment to true everything up.
So but we also said that we may, we may have a possibility of having to pay for city manager to move here. So that that's not in this budget either then. Should that be in here in the amended part?
We can add it. What I wanted to get to real quick, and I know Kerry was almost there before we broke, was, you know, we took 75 and then 175. And what I don't want everybody to do, and I'm going to reiterate this, is think that we're kicking the can on the road study, but I just signed the agreement today. It's going to take six months. I say seven because in the with the consultants we've been dealing with, nothing has come to fruition on a due date since I've been sitting in this chair. So, you know, and then after that, after we approve, prioritize, everything is said and done, we're still three months out before even getting a bid back to have any construction done. So this makes the most sense to me, especially seeing as we will have additional funds coming in when we start redlining for the September amendment. That being said, if we need to add the 15,000 in here, we can do that. We did leave funds in both the FARF and the capital improvement plan, and we can adjust accordingly. And we just didn't want to wipe those out clean, of course. Because that's not the purpose. But that was, I think, the best option without redlining a whole bunch of items and then going back in September and redlining a whole bunch of items. And this is the most clean, cut, direct way to say, this is how we shore this up to make it net neutral budget amendment.
And using reality. I mean, when we set the budget on the roads, we were, you know, like hell bent to start getting some roads done, and then we've had some road blocks, so to speak, but
Unintended.
Yeah, no pun
Potholes.
Yep, some potholes along the way. So I think realistically, and there's still 75 in there, plus there's about 60 from sales tax for roads. So that's, you know, getting bumping up to 150 on roads that we can do, we can spend. So we're not saying
The sales tax will, the road study itself will be utilized from the road sales tax fees.
Okay, I thought there was 85,000.
Yeah, that's what I thought we were trying to make clear earlier. That's just in general engineering. So even there, when we look at this, it's going to be more helpful in September or later in the budget year, we can see where what we've already spent with Cobb, Finley, or other engineers. Because, you know, even here, you know, we had, even though the EDC paid for part of it, we had the master plan for the 2483 and stuff like that. So we are utilizing some of the other engineering buckets already, but so then we can come back and and look at it. Because, yeah, I mean, so really, do what?
I hear you.
Okay. Because really, for the way I look at this is, we started a couple of years ago, and we had about 100,000 in road and our capital projects. And so for us, it's a way to fund critical infrastructure projects. So right now, we had earmarked 100,000 for the fixed asset replacement fund. Ideally, I think that number needs to be anywhere from 150 to 200,000, so next year's budget.
Going forward.
Yes, going forward. And so as we go into next year's budget, that's going to be my goal, is to make that number 150. And and maybe even the next year, it needs to go up to 200. We'll know more once we have the workshop to where we can give you all a presentation of all the assets that the city has and kind of a generalistic, general realistic replacement timeline. And so that would be the same thing with the CIP. The fixed asset is really more tangible vehicles and heavier equipment. CIP is the infrastructure that we're all concerned about, the roads, the water lines, stuff like this. So ideally, this will be some of the things that will be helpful, that I can go out and see what other cities do. But my guess is that the bare minimum over the next two years, we need to get that number up to a half million dollars that's coming out of the annual budget to fund roads, road work or water work. And at the same time, we're going to have to go out for debt. And so that's going to be a part of these upcoming discussions over the next month, the two months to three months, that'll really help put the numbers into better perspective. You know, because typically what we've done over at least the three budgets that I've been here is all we do is we focus on one year at a time, and that's disingenuous to the city that we got to start making sure we're looking, one, three, five years out. And that's, it's just, it's still budgetary assumptions, but it's the best our goal. Obviously, we've hit some roadblocks in that as well, not having a full time city manager, certain things like that, that certain things have adjusted. But I mean, once we get through audits, that'll free up some of my time to make sure we get all that stuff to where we really are planning for the future, not just one year at a time.
But if there are things you'd like, like the moving costs to be accounted for, we can still do that and make it a net neutral budget adjustment. We just need to realize that we'll need to pull a little bit more from those other two.
Funds.
Yeah, at this time, like the 15,000 or whatever.
I could go either way on that. I mean, we might have moving costs.
I mean, if
We might not.
If we redline it, we redline it, and we will
Yeah, and we'll say, well, council, we can approve it at the time when we approve the contract and say, yes, we will be funding your moving costs up to a certain amount. So I'm not as, I don't feel as strongly that it has to be in here right now. I think it's worth talking about so we're all aware of it, that it's not in here. Okay.
Okay, I need I'm going to need a vote on the budget amendment, which includes all of it. Go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead, Roxanne.
Now I'm wondering if we should vote on the police department first because it's, you know.
Either way, what do you all want to do?
Because I mean, if I vote no on the police department, I still
Okay, let's go back to, do I hear a motion to accept staff, the police staffing? Get back to that one.
I make a motion that we accept the police staffing as presented by
I second that.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Show hands. Three, four? Okay.
I'm going to abstain. Not going to vote no, but I will
Roxanne abstaining. Okay, that passes. Now we're down
Who made the motion and second?
I made the motion. I think Stephen
Stephen second. Now we'll go back to the ordinance number 2024.01. That's the budget amendment that would clear up that we just did. Do I hear a motion to accept that, please?
I make a motion to accept the budget amendment as discussed.
With the small change.
With the with the changes as discussed, yeah.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, Jimbo, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It passes unanimously. Okay, next one, I think, has to do with city manager recruitment, and I think, Jimbo, are you going to take that one and run?
Yes, sir. I can get us started and then go from there. So I'll direct y'all's attention to the handout, the draft, too, that we have. What I'd like to do is just kind of briefly run through it so council understands what the changes that we're recommending, I say we, the liaisons and Clear Career are recommending based on discussion with them and the input that I received from from Orion and council on on things that we wanted to look at. Go ahead.
And this is also from the input of all the residents and all the department heads. So this is like they're pulling it all together for us. Okay.
Yeah, and the goal after tonight, hopefully, is to have a completed product that we can send back to them and say, this is it. This is what we're running with. So I'm going to try to move quick and for residents, I know you guys don't have this, so grab one of us when we're done, if something's brought up that you want to address, so.
Will it be put online as a part of the packet?
I don't think
Not until It's approving Okay, so it'll be posted when we post the job. Okay.
Okay, so first section about the community, the only changes that were recommended was they addressed the Temple Independent School District, and we, in fact, are not part of the Temple Independent School District, so we changed that to Belton. Let's see. The next change, if you flip through to position priorities. The last bullet on there was an addition, work with council to finalize and implement our new comprehensive plan. Everything else remains the same. Minimum qualifications, which is the next page for the ideal candidate, that's going to need some discussion, so we'll loop back to that one. Once we cover all these other changes, we'll discuss that real quick. Same thing with on the next page where we discuss the relocation and residency of our candidate. We'll need to do, readdress that, and both of those are based on conversations I had with with Neil, Clear Career, and Dorthea and I discussing those things as well. And then everything else was basically just a typo on how to apply. They corrected the typo on spelling, and of course, they adjusted the the website for Belton ISD. So those were the only changes to the brochure, which is what they call that.
Yeah, this is our marketing brochure. So this is what's going to be the document that will get us our next city manager.
So Jimbo
Yes, sir.
Oh, maybe this isn't isn't my place, but
No, shoot.
You know, I thought about this following my submission of comments. I don't know if maybe somewhere in this position, you know, position opportunities, maybe we reference the staggered terms because it's brought up every time, and and we, maybe we reference that we are new council. So this is an opportunity for the person coming in to work with an all new council, provide the training, to get everybody up to speed. I don't know where we would put it on here, how that looks on here.
And I don't know that we can commit to that because it's, if we don't adopt it, it's got to be the next council. But I think that's certainly something we can talk to them about.
Right. And that's what I mean, maybe something, an opportunity, it's an opportunity for them to
I see.
To evaluate
But that wouldn't be within their realm of responsibility.
Or they know it's, they know it's something that's on the community's mind. I don't, I don't know.
You know, when I met with Kent, because I asked him, what are the three shortcomings that you think we have with this position? And the very first one, he said, was staggered terms, honestly. So I don't know how we address that.
Is that just a position challenge? Because in theory, unless we do it, there could be an entirely new council come May 25. So, I mean
Yeah, I think challenger opportunity.
Do you want to throw a phrase out there? What are you thinking as far as phraseology? Do you want the new kids on the block?
Maybe it's not a challenge.
Maybe they can come up with some
Okay.
Proper was-was words to identify it, but not
I'm sure it'll be discussed.
Just trust, well, we got to finalize this. So just trust Jimbo and I to come up with some wording that recognizes maybe an opportunity, make it a more positive.
Yeah, okay.
And I think, again, I think that Kent can probably come up with some good ideas to help that.
Yeah, we can talk to him about it for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They may have same situations.
Especially if you've already talked to him about it. I mentioned it, but he didn't say it was a shortcoming to me, anyway. But yeah, okay. I think it's an issue.
You know, I'm an optimistic pessimist.
No, I think it's definitely Is there anything else, Orion, that popped?
And that was that one page. I didn't know if there was anything that's on that.
Yeah, any anything else for the brochure? No, I'm moving fast. I'm not trying to put people asleep.
You were going to go back and talk
Yeah, so we'll go back and cover, because it's wrapped up in the the position description here, coming up here as well, and we'll need to address that, so.
Okay, we moving on?
Yeah, so if there's nothing else, go ahead, Mr. Potts.
This has a contract. The contract has 12 months. I'm not sure if you want
We haven't even talked about the contract. It's a sample. It's a
I don't think you ought to attach this contract.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, 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 no.
It was attached specifically for council's discussion.
So how to apply is the last page on the brochure.
Yeah, it's not part of the brochure packet. We just combined it all because it was all coming from
Clear
Just one discussion item. We're not taking
Oh, no, we're not even close. We haven't even started a discussion on that yet.
What I have is
Sorry.
Right, right.
No, that's the brochure, now we're moving on to the.
We'll make sure next time to keep it where it's a separate standalone document.
Yeah.
Okay, on the next couple pages, what I tried to do is if there was a recommended change in terminology, verbiage, et cetera, highlighted the previous in yellow and then the red are the substitutions or additions. So just briefly, instead of a top-appointed executive, this position's referred everywhere else as chief executive officer, so just keeping that standardized and in line. Under values and priorities, we added including but not limited to periodic reports of progress to council. We've discussed that several times, coming from the city manager. If I'm going too fast, stop me, please. We clarified under the budgets, both operational and capital budgets. And then we added the big one for everybody is oversee procurement of infrastructure funding through bonds, grants and other instruments. Everything else on that page remains the same. On the top, we changed, what was that word that we hated? Interpret.
Interpret.
Yeah, rather than.
I didn't like the word interpret.
Yeah. So instead of interpreting what we're, we're directing, it's execute. We added committees to the things that we would like the city manager to attend. One of the things that we need to make clear and I didn't add it in here, recommendation was, just to be sure that this individual understands that they're not able to attend one of these, they should designate somebody to attend in their absence, so.
So staff should be at every one of them.
We added regulations to the compliance sentence, just to make sure those are in there. And then the two big sentences that were added about maintaining, establishing, maintaining working environment culture conducive to positive morale, individual style and quality, and then provide leadership to staff, council, residents and volunteers to ensure a positive and supportive environment across the city. Okay, that takes us to the discussion. So the couple things that came up in conversation back and forth, again, Dorothy and I talking, talking with Clear Career, Kent and the gang, and then bounces off of Neil, were the two things that we included, which were the residency requirement and the education slash experience requirement. So the discussion was, previously we agreed on moving to the city preferred within twenty miles mandatory. Same thing with education, four-year degree, this type of experience, et cetera, et cetera. So the discussion that we need to, need to discuss is do we want to be that specific? In talking with Neil, the reason we should avoid that is we're gonna tie our own hands, if that makes sense. I'm breathing.
So, yeah, the question of residency, how flexible, the bottom line is how flexible we want to be on that. That's the bottom line.
And the question I posed to Mr. Potts was if we put that preferred to live in the city that you, mandatory, you will live within twenty miles, if somebody lives twenty-two miles away, it's a breach of contract. We can't, we can't do that. It creates an issue with discrimination in people who don't live in that twenty miles that want to participate or want to drop their application.
Or don't want to move.
Yeah, you want to elaborate on that one?
Put your mic on.
You can give preference to an applicant that will reside in the city.
Just move it closer. As Esther says, eat it.
Love those mics.
I think if you want to, you could say that you, you know, preference will be given to an applicant who will reside within the city or within some, you know, some miles of the city. But if you, I think if you make it a hard requirement that you, you know, you might be missing somebody.
Okay.
That makes this perfect sense because then you're not tying yourself, but you're, the inducement, if, if, or, or, that will be a plus, that you're willing to move into the area. I think, then you're not saying you have to, you want to commute, knock yourself out, but.
Yeah, and I've heard, I've heard conversations on, on both sides, the pros and cons of that. One obviously is if you have a city manager that resides in the city, he or she has a vested interest in what is going on across the board with everything, you hope, versus someone who does not. And then the argument is, somebody who lives in the city could conceivably, not saying it happens, make decisions based on their own well-being and interests rather than the city because now I care about my side of town, not everybody else's. So I'm on the fence on that one. My concern is that we could miss a good-quality candidate who lives just on the other side of Copper's Cove. We, we actually looked at thirty-five miles, that's where that number come from. If you, if you draw a straight line, thirty-five miles, Waco, other side of Cove, Gatesville, down to just this side, between Salado and Georgetown, we could run into the problem where we have a good-quality candidate, maybe the best candidate, that has a senior in high school and a sophomore in high school that says, sorry, I'm not moving, my kid's staying in the school. And I don't want that to happen, so that's what I'm talking about, tying our hands. So I, I don't know what the right answer is, I definitely like preferred.
And this isn't a decision, this is recruiting criteria. So when it comes down to the decision, if we have one person that lives really far away and somebody that lives closer, like Neil said, we'll give, maybe the one, maybe, the one that lives closer will get preferential treatment. You know, so it's, we just want a council to agree on the guideline because we agreed on a guideline last time and now we're moving the goalpost.
I think you're absolutely correct, I think we do not want to tie our hands. And, but an inducement may be something that would be beneficial to both the candidates and to us.
So Neil, how did you phrase that, then, preference will be given to?
And then just don't put in within thirty-five miles, it's something we can look at later. Is that, is that what we're saying if we do that? Okay. Because otherwise it says residence relocation to city of Morgan's Point is referred, is preferred, but then it also says residency within thirty-five miles is preferred, so which one do you prefer? Yeah, yeah, so, yeah. So I, I can see taking the residency within thirty-five miles out.
Okay, so basically what I have is preference will be given to applicants willing to reside within Morgan's Point Resort. Does that work for everybody? Okay.
I think it's great, but you have to remember what your housing stock looks like. I could be willing to live in Morgan's Point Resort, but if I can't find a place to live, I can't find a place to live. So I think that's something you, you just need to be cognizant of.
In the past, and I've been through several city managers, it's never been an issue. If you can, when you talk to them, you can find out what their intentions are. If they don't intend to move here, well then you can take that into consideration if you're gonna hire them or not. You know, well, if you find a good candidate and they live in a Copper's, I mean, the Corpus Christi, you know, they're gonna have to move, so, you know, or what, what are you planning on doing? Do you, you know, what do you plan on doing? Well, he's gonna have to move somewhere, so you can make that a part of your criteria right there, if you're gonna hire him or not, so. Take it from there.
So would you say we don't even need to have that? I'm just asking your opinion. Okay, we never padded in before in the past.
Alton did here, Easeman didn't, one before that. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, there you go, right there, then you can make determination.
Well, can we stop with the first sentence, relocation to city Morgan's Point Resort is preferred?
I, I like that.
And then, well, everything else is negotiation? Okay.
Okay, and then, and then real quick, I don't want to, you know, hopefully we can come to consensus on this one as well, is experience and education requirements. What exactly do we want that to say and how do we want to say it? So I think it's listed as, in two different places, it's two different things. One says that you will have a four-year degree with, you know, experience, and then the other one just says that any combination of, so. Hit me with that.
Are we looking at the ideal candidate?
Yeah, minimum qualifications of the ideal candidate.
Okay, so you graduate from a four-year university with a degree in public administration, business or related field, and that's just, you know, a piece of paper. But then we want five or more years of progressively responsible related experience in a position with a community of comparable size as Morgan's Point. So, what do you?
That's, my concern is, and I don't know a whole lot about the progress in city politics in these positions, so maybe defer to you guys, that the concern I have is with the forty, can I remember all this, I don't have to dig that up. So graduate from accredited four-year college, university degree in public administration, business administration or a related field. Do we run the risk if we make that so narrow that we have somebody that did not get a degree in that field that is in working in city management for ten years? Because if we do, we just ran into the same thing. Well, sorry, we said you will have a degree, you got ten years as a city manager somewhere, sorry, you're not hireable. So that's kind of my concern is just, is the specificity.
Say that fast three times.
That one.
I think that you hit the nail on the head because if I remember the discussion that Kent came with, he said he had a gr, his first degree was in criminal justice, and then he went, later he got his master's. But, I mean, that would, he got into it through the criminal justice.
Can we take out related field?
Well, the related field would allow you to add something, yeah, that gives you the slack, I think.
Oh, but I'm saying, just graduation from four-year college with a degree period.
Or we'd leave it like it is, I know where you're going with that, leave it like it is and just add the word preferred. If we throw, you know, Neil, I think Neil's guidance again on that, you throw the word preferred in there, hey, we prefer you to have a degree in this, but if you don't, you're a great basketball.
A degree would be great, I mean, in, in public administration, whatever, but a degree with more experience would be a bigger criteria and I don't think you ought to, that's my opinion, restricted to a particular degree, just because he, somebody here, my her, graduating from college is a plus, but the experience is the bigger plus.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of my line, go ahead Neil, I'm sorry.
Perfect.
Solve all of that in one fell.
Perfect.
That's why he's a lawyer.
Yeah. I, I agree because, I, I'm thinking about, so I'm an LVN, I worked in ICU for years and they don't allow LVNs in ICU anymore, but should I stay because I, but I didn't have the degree? So I was not allowed to stay because I didn't have, and you know, this was years ago. So I, I mean, there's, there's reasons why people go to school for public admin and for business admin and I, I just don't, I don't know that we want to disqualify that because there may be some things they need to have learned in that degree fields.
Okay, just by the preferred, that it, Jimbo?
Yeah.
Well, I, so Roxanne.
How are we gonna, how are we gonna?
Did you make your point, I thought that was a good point.
Are we gonna do that subject to your amendments?
So I think the, the minimum preferred require, qualifications would be, our preferred minimum qualifications would, would help and it would still leave in there what we're really looking for and without watering it down too much.
Are y'all gonna word that?
Yeah, just preferred. And we'll just say preferred, preferred minimal qualifications. Yeah, because it, you'll get extra points if you have a degree. If you don't have a degree but you're just like off the charts, then we'll give you other points. I mean, it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a whole package, it's, none of these are self-fulfilling prophecies here. I mean, it's, it's a whole person that we'll be evaluating.
I'm having a struggle right now in, in my heart, honestly.
Okay.
Like, and again, I, I think we just vote on it, but like I do have, I am gonna vocalize this because, and I'm not the, the PhD doctor guy, you know, with, with all of the letters behind my name. And I, and I've seen on both sides, because I see some people that go, you know, oh, I've got this degree, they get the job, then really they're completely clueless. I mean, truly, and I think that's what you're trying to sort of allude to. But I also see the other flip side of that of, and some people worked really hard to get those degrees and they made sacrifices and like, that's their ticket to getting into the position, so, you know, like, I, I don't know what the answer is.
We'll give them extra points.
Yeah, we'll give them extra points.
I think what we do is we, we list it as preferred, as I think everybody is saying. And then we just use Ms. Hankins' guidance to look through the weeds and sift through the garbage and say, hey, this person's blowing smoke. So, okay, then if the, yeah. So I've got the changes, I won't rehash them, if everybody's comfortable with them, then I'm not gonna motion because I'm the writer. So I, that's all I have.
Make a motion to accept.
I move we accept draft, draft two as amended in the discussion.
Okay, second.
Do, do we need to say the brochure and the job description?
Yeah, let's clarify that.
Make sure it's not this entire packet.
No, I don't want the job description.
Right.
No.
No.
So, so you're not changing the job?
I'm taking the, the city manager, city Morgan's Point proposal that we're gonna send out to hire, to.
Stops us.
Induce people to come to see us. Just the draft two, this one right here, as discussed.
Your second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Just on the brochure itself.
Stops that recruitment schedule.
Yes. It was how to apply, the very last page is how to apply.
The schedule will not be included with the marketing package, but you're approving, oh, I see, you're, what you're approving. Okay, got it, okay. So everybody has a chance to, has had a chance to look at the schedule and they get it?
We're, we're still voting on the draft.
Oh, I thought Stephen wasn't.
Well, no, I'm thinking, I'm saying stop right there.
Oh, okay. Right.
Right, correct.
The first two.
Okay, we got a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, okay. Now on the road study.
Two was approved.
On that one.
Just a couple things and we can cover them in detail at the workshop, but we've got. We've got, we're still on manage, as, city manager.
Brochure and there are other documents that need to be.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay.
I thought that was all the whole.
So the other, next attachment is the schedule. So everybody take a look at that schedule, we want to go to market on the twenty-ninth of February. If we can get the work plan done and everything in here agreed upon, we can go to market sooner. So, and then we hope to have employment agreement and announce a selection by April eleventh. So we've cut off about two weeks, the previous schedule that you saw. So we're gonna tighten up in between and Clear Career is, they revised this, so they're totally on board with meeting all of their obligations.
I just need a clarification, I, I texted about this, I think to Jimbo. It says mayor, on April eight and nine, the mayor and council conduct interviews with finalists. April eight is the eclipse, so I, I.
Oh.
Oops.
There was clarification with that.
Well, candidates may want to come for the eclipse here.
Well, well, no, I think the clarification was we will not be part of those actual interviews, right?
That's what, but that's not what it says, so that's why I want it clarified.
Okay.
Because it says mayor and council conduct interviews with finalists.
Well, what are we gonna have, three to four? Can we do three to four interviews over that two-day period?
Right, because of the eclipse.
Okay.
Because you can't get on the, off the highway.
We may not be able to zoom because they're talking.
Doesn't even need to be set in, at Pacific time, I mean, since we're not there yet, but that could be.
Well, that's, that's just one thing I wanted to bring up because we were told that we may have trouble with internet connections.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So if it was Zoom or something, and we certainly might have trouble with candidates even trying to enter the city. So I, I really think that those, that eight and nine is like, I don't care if we do six and seven or six.
I would, I would recommend we do it the week after that.
Right, after, I agree, yeah, that sounds good. That would be.
Eleven.
I'm sorry, say it again?
Eleventh, I think.
The eleventh is Thursday, the next week starts April fifteenth. So could we do it instead of the week after, can we do it, let's see, that's Monday and Tuesday? Can we do it like Thursday and Friday, the eleventh and twelve?
April the eleventh to twelve?
I'm asking, Orion, does that make sense for the city? Yeah, let's, let's see.
I like the eleventh and twelve because I don't want to push it out too much, but I don't want to end up with us having a big problem with whatever we're doing.
I agree, I hadn't even thought about that, to be perfectly honest, I'm like so tunnel vision right now.
When I put in leave, they're like, we don't have school on April the eighth, it's the eclipse.
Okay, so we'll shuffle that, so maybe it's April fifteenth or sixteenth or we're ready to make a final decision.
I don't think there's any way you're going to negotiate an employment contract in two days.
Like I say, I don't know why we ought to put a date on it, I, I think, I think it's far enough out there, we've got two months ahead of us.
Let's say end of April.
Yeah, just say April, yeah.
That's close enough, push everything down to the end of April.
Okay, end of April. So we've got, if we're looking at the candidates on the eleventh or twelfth, we've got a couple weeks to sort through it, make an offer, negotiate a contract.
Okay, in that case, do I hear a motion to accept the schedule, subject to the adjustments we just made, pushing down to April, the end of April on the final three items?
Yeah, so moved.
So moved, second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion.
Did you need any, what else did you need? Did you need any, what else did you need from this?
From the schedule?
Uh, no, from this.
Employment contract? Do we want to start the conversation, or do we want to wait for the workshop and start the conversation? Because there's about six points in this employment contract. This the first time I think you guys have seen a sample employment contract?
I, I had it at home.
Oh, you had it? Okay, so maybe it's the second time?
This is the first.
I would, I would recommend that, that we hold off on this, let everybody review it.
Yep.
And then we can discuss it if we.
I did send it out to everybody a couple of weeks ago, but this is the first time we'll have discussed it.
Yeah.
So it's not the first time they've seen it, but it's the first time for discussion. So just hold.
Yeah, my thought is this is something we can add to that
Okay.
agenda item for Monday.
Okay.
You know, I don't expect that meeting will take forever, but we can have some of the conversation on this. I mean, at the, at the end, what's gonna happen basically, from my understanding is you guys are gonna tell me who to start negotiations with, and then Neil and, Neil and I will work through the, the contract.
There's a couple of things in here.
Yeah, there are things.
Council needs to, are we gonna, are we gonna even offer this or not?
And I think, I think those are the things we discuss Monday.
Yeah.
And I think things will still continue to pop up. You know, you can read this five different times and find something new every time.
I found three or four things that I am concerned about.
Big things, yeah.
Big things.
I had a list of six that I thought we needed to address, so yeah, okay.
Okay, moving on, road study.
It's my time to shine.
Your time to shine.
All right. As I referenced in the workshop, maybe earlier even in this meeting, um, I did actually execute the agreement today with Cobb Finley for the road study. Um, I know a lot of people sitting around here, maybe even in here, last time heard, one to two days would be the turnaround time. What he was speaking of when he said one to two days was the driving of the vehicle down our city roads. There is still a five to six-month process that comes after that for, for analyzing all of the data, prioritizing all of it, getting it to the council, and then all the priorities and everything being set and adopted. So it is still quite the process, as I referenced earlier. I just wanted to provide everybody an update on that. There's no real action to take. Uh, the contract was under what everybody authorized, so, or what the council authorized when we started this. Um, I will, uh, now that it's been executed, we'll just work with, uh, Alfonso to get the, the kickoff meeting started so we can schedule everything and we can start moving along. But we'll continue to have a road study update, uh, on the agenda as we go through the process.
Good.
Mr. Mayor would like to, I just have a question that's unrelated to this particular item, but, um, when we were at TML, we saw a, a company that had something called an asphalt zipper that looked really interesting. I would just like to know if there's any further information about that.
So that is something BJ has a contact for. Um, if we're interested, we can have him come out. They'll do a demo for the council. Um, like I, I think I referenced, uh, maybe even at our strategic plan workshop. If we're interested in the asphalt zipper, it's not something the city would actually have to buy. The city of Rogers has already, um, purchased one. They said they're more than happy to, to share that resource with us um, under some type of contractual agreement. So, but I, I can definitely have BJ work to get a demonstration scheduled with zipper.
Because what, this road study is just gonna identify the roads, but it's not really gonna put us out for bid for all the roads. And so it would, I would be really interested to hear BJ's input on this, because I know he had looked at it. And I'd like to hear what he thinks about it, and then, um, just as, as something as, down the road, as we're considering the process, is that something that we could use here, and could we contract with Rogers for it?
I'll, I'll follow up with him.
Just FYI for people listening, um, the asphalt zipper, they claim that they could save us, we would spend 40% of the cost that we would normally spend on roads, and that the, our own maintenance department could do it themselves. Now, this was the salesperson telling me this, so I'm just, I, it sounded really good, so I would like to just know for sure, you know, before we just discount it. So, thank you.
Okay, moving along. The next two items are pretty similar. Uh, the first one is Resolution 202406. That's to approve, uh, inter, allow the city, interim city manager, Orion, to submit a grant application in the amount of $35,043 for radios under FY 2025 pivotal justice grant program. So that's to apply for that grant. Do I hear a motion to accept Resolution 2024.06?
I recommend we do that.
I'll second.
Second, okay. Any discussion, questions?
The only discussion is this resolution says that the council, that the city will provide matching funds. And my understanding is that's a required wording for all resolutions, but I do want it in the minutes, Camille, that it is not anticipated that we will have to match funds with this.
Both of these programs are non-match, uh, programs, but it is a requirement, um, by the state and federal government. We include that in case there is a change of terms at a later date.
And if there's a change of terms, then we will address it at the time. But I'd like it in the minutes that neither of these require matching funds at this time. Okay.
There's been a motion on the second. All in favor?
Aye.
You oppose? Motion passes. Next item is similar, is allow, 202407 to allow interim city manager to submit a grant application in the amount of $9,350 under the bullet resistance shield grant program. Similar thing?
It's the same thing.
It's a different grant program under the Public Safety Office.
Split them up because there's two different grants on it. So I hear a motion to accept that, please?
I move a motion to accept 202407.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Same thing, you're right, all right, you ran on the matching funds, no, no matching. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, city manager, it's your, you get to shine now. You get to tell us what you want to do.
Oh, okay.
Oh, no.
No city man?
Your project updates are first. Oh, I actually, I actually printed it out this time, so I think, yeah.
You want to do the execution?
Mic's here. Yeah, I mean, if, if we can, we can skip my update, I've provided it.
Okay.
We can come back and I can provide it later. You guys can reach out. Everybody should have a printed copy.
Yes.
So if we have issues, we'll talk about it at the workshop. I mean, not the workshop, the special session.
On Monday.
Yeah, on Monday.
Tuesday or whenever we're having it. Okay.
We, we have the, the company for the executive session.
Yep, okay, okay.
All ready? Okay, the city council reserves the right to adjourn and discuss items in executive session. This permitted by Texas Open Meetings Act, UI51 dash 071A, update on litigation. So I'm gonna ask the, uh, audience to please vacate the premises for just a little while. We will reconvene shortly after, after the session is concluded.
State of the Union. We're going to start back. I'm going to turn it over to you, Ryan. For all you folks out there, there has been no action in the executive session. We're going to go back in on our regular agenda.
I'm not going to read through.
For all you folks out there, there's been no action in the executive session. We're gonna go back in on our regular agenda.
I'm not going to read through my agenda items, and as you'll see, I put some agenda items for future agendas on there. But if any of you have questions or would like to reach out, you know how to get ahold of me. I'm fairly easy to get ahold of. So, pending that, I don't have anything else for the council.